All right, this is the Diamond Regional School Committee meeting for uh November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Mister Jennings?
Yeah.
Mister Vegan?
Yeah.
Mister Divasia? Attorney Flanagan? Mister Manuels?
Yeah.
Miss Menard?
Yeah.
We have a call. In accordance to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-F, any member of the public making an audio or video recording of this public meetings, a member who wishes to record the meeting must first notify the chair and must comply with the reasonable requirements regarding audio or video equipment established by the chair not being.
Miss Madoff?
Yeah.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the October ninth, two thousand twenty-five minutes. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Oppose? Uh, do we have anybody for citizens?
We do not.
Right unfinished business for FY twenty-six, twenty-eight, two movement plan is with the chairman, this is Mrs. Ferguson's plan to present to you tonight. Mrs. Ferguson.
Okay, so as I, and when I developed the draft and brought it before the committee in August, I told you that I need some time to go back to the staff. So on September twenty-sixth, we met in small focus groups and they went through and they prioritized the items by giving them a number like which were the highest importance to lowest importance. So from that, from the way that the staff kind of correlated, the administrative team then went back in and ordered them on one, yeah, one objectives would be year two, year three, my timeline amount like. Um, two weeks ago, I sent it out to all um parents, students and faculty for one more revision and opened up a form for feedback and input. From there, what I got was basically compliments on, you know, things that we're doing with the kids. Kids being kids, you know, let us use our cell phones at lunch as a school to a bit more, um, you know, and things like that. Um, but whatever, I didn't really get any input that would really change any of the objectives or goals. So I present to you tonight what I'd like to run with, but the next three yes is us going.
If you do take a look at the plan very quickly, because she got in depth, uh, it does delve into uh not only the objectives, but also what are the action steps to reach that objective? And the number one priority that presented to me by Mrs. Ferguson, something thoroughly agree with, which is building a culture of high expectations for staff and students. We need to hold diamond to what it means to be a diamond graduate. We need to hold diamond and students of the staff as to what it means to be a diamond. That there are the objectives that are there. The second one was strengthening guidance, career planning and student support services. This would indicate uh and those that the although the guidance department is uh now relatively young with new people in there, but to ask the students to understand that there is a plan for them to um their guidance on where they're going. What is their career, when they finish diamond and what support services are here in the building uh within confines of diamond that they can get support, whether it's any of those three or any other emotional issues that they have that they are in there. And there are the year one, two and three processes of how to do it. The third final one is cultivating a positive school cu- culture and strengthening communication, although that sounds like the first one, that will different. Is that in order to do what we do, we need to have a very strong communication system among the faculty, the staff, the students. How do we relate to parents? How do we relate to all the stakeholders that have a very large interest in that? What are we doing on the new building? What does that mean to have that building? It is going to be a crown jewel of the city of Fall River. Everybody's going to admire, comes through it, look at it. And they're also going to expect more from our students, our staff. How do we get that communication? We are a diamond, we're a new diamond, but we are a diamond and this is what we've done. Man, this is what she has done, how she got involved, it was just absolutely fabulous. And objective number four, boosting family and community engagement. We are a free school. We are here, yeah, reach out to the community. They seek us out for projects, but they also seek us out for education. How do we prove that every single day? What do we do? How do we show it? How can we reach out to them? I think something that you hear tonight about bonding with B C C is a step in this direction. Is that we are not only just for diamond and those who come to diamond, but we are for those people who live in the Fall River communities, for the Somerset Swansea West Board, and how do they see us and how can they reach out to us? So I have to say very well done.
The last thing, the last thing that I just will add, it was in, you know, in preparing, there's a lot of things that you're gonna hear later on about the governor's recommendation for our new graduation requirements and we're definitely in on things that have happened.
Excellent. You'll be hearing as she, so I'm repeating what she said, but you'll hear about some proposed changes, updates that are coming down. Also, the community is informed. Again, this is all keeping with 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 the new diamond is going. Then, I wish Mister Divasia, I could say with diamond of nineteen seventy-six when I first started, we've tried to change a few bits, citizens.
Excellent. Well done. I think asking for this the other day was very well done. I've had a lot of good points.
Any other questions, comments?
Myself too, it's excellent. Read it the other day and what I thought of a question, it was answered two lines down. So really, really well done, done well.
And I give the staff to that, so I'm grateful to that as well, because the draft, the initial draft was in one segment and then they went into small groups of ten and then really refined and it gave the opportunity to for them to jump on what this plan was saying and to give different points of view. And if you want to talk about improving culture, that format in which they did it is exactly what we.
And I think with the, with the change, with the admissions, you know, program going to a lottery, everything is gonna, it may change our demographics slightly. Um, and I think this is, this is a great plan to maintain that culture, to hold everybody accountable, to raise the standards and keep them there. I think it's uh all around a great thing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, uh, the recommendation is to approve the FY twenty-five, twenty-eight school improvement plan.
I submitted.
Still move. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right, uh, B will be uh coming back at a later date.
Yes.
All right, moving on to the patterns, we want the M S B A school building committee update.
Um, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Um, so our architect is here today, uh, Greg Join, and um I asked him to come because there's so much going on outside. And um also the um, the couple of these uh items that are gonna be coming off for our vote tonight, I is well aware of it and I wanted to hear, so if you have any questions, we had somebody to answer them, uh, not just Brian and I trying to remember everything everybody says.
Oh, I think we have.
Oh, true. So anyway, Greg, would you like to give us an update first?
Sure, just on the, an overall update, I'll give you the short version, we are on time, non-budget, uh, which I think is probably parallel to your concerns. Um, it overall, uh, the project is, is in good shape. Uh, as you start on the north end of the building, it's, it's, for those of you who've seen the construction, uh, the building progresses from the north. Uh, Locust Street, uh, basically uh toward the south over the uh course of the site. Um, uh, the first area is now in the stages where they're applying interior finishes, so really good time. Uh, that area is at least temporarily conditioned space, uh, so that finishes can be applied in our um, you know, good standing uh for the duration of construction, uh, once it's finished, you're applied, protected in place, uh, until the, you know, final cleaning. Uh, and so they're all going to be, you know, brand new basically the day you start. Um, as we work through the sequences, um, uh, they're, you know, really starting to finalize chemical systems, so all the things that kind of get covered up. And in some cases in your building, uh, are intentionally exposed to allow the, the school to really be used as a teaching tool are going in. Um, chemical systems are uh nearly complete, the majority of the research and top design with. I mean, they're.
Don't.
Actually herself, so really we're in a really good place coming into winter. Temporarily closing of larger openings, things like the organ doors, the most shops is taken place already, so that the building is able to be conditioned, making sure that, you know, not only workers can work comfortably, but finishes can go on, be applied, safe, secure. So that's really what's happening inside the building. And again, you, you get to see four, uh, kind of different stages of the building as it progresses to the south, uh, finishing now, uh, kind of at the, at the last end there, so. Um, uh, that is a really good place to be. Um, in terms of the overall project, uh, the binder has gone on behind the building, so the first course of asphalt pavement has gone on all the way around the building. Uh, so that's secure for the winter as well, uh, giving us a really good base to work off of. The old building, so the metal building that's against Route twenty-four, uh, will restart uh construction uh in the next couple of weeks. So uh, the frame is up currently, uh, it'll start the enclosure process in the next couple of weeks. Uh, move them out of there while binder and things went down, uh, that'll re-mobilize uh soon and that'll be complete uh in the near future. So that's a really great uh building for, for storage, uh, for the long term, making sure that, you know, school can stay organized, well stocked. Uh, as we move into next year, uh, the area that is kind of lay down and parking for insurance contractors right now will turn into temporary parking. Uh, and the access road will become live, uh, for that permanent access down to the lower areas. Uh, that's really um the last stage of that first phase of the project before we kind of flip the site a little bit and take over demolition here, which is scheduled for uh next summer.
That, that parking is referred to as the original softball fields, the new softball field for me. That's gonna be for the teachers and uh business or anybody that comes to the school. And they've already got, uh, they've been working with um and it's a super technical on traffic, uh, dealing with the pickup and the buses. So everything's in mind, uh, this summer, it's gonna be a lot of work for outside going on to get that done. And this summer also, the student parking lot is gonna be, the uh redone. The uh roadway that goes down to the construction area that they built, took away those parking spaces are gonna be regained. And uh the uh drainage is just gonna be, uh, what we have, they're just going to bring it to the level of the uh top. Uh, lighting, uh, it's gonna be new, correct? All right, and um, so that'll be finished. So when the school does open, that will never, that we won't have to touch that again. That'll be done. Um, and the teachers will have a roadway that'll go down to park in the back of the building. Along the back, back of the building, we have about thirty-four parking spaces, but those are gonna be used for handicap, um, automotive mechanics, auto body, um, and um, maintenance. So uh, there'll be no room back there for teachers, for anybody else to park for now. Administration where um Mr. Bentley's office is gonna be, um, will have approximately eight, nine parking spaces for him and his staff. Um, but uh, it's, if that is at this time, that's uh has been blacktopped. So um, it's a lot of work that's been going on. The biggest uh goal that we're gonna reach hopefully by this first week in December. And the electricians all celebrate when this happens, but they will open up the first launching grid, I believe.
Permanent power.
Per- permanent power, which is, that's a big success getting the building now online. So um, that's, that's, there's a lot going on, there's shop work going on, uh, for uh our, our new uh vocation of one of the inner working hard with uh the shops right now and changes. And Greg and his team try and get all those changes in before the walls get closed up. So there's a lot going on behind the scenes with this building, uh, but we are very, very happy, Brian, we'll tell you, with um the date of getting this opening due, so.
And I just said, an overall project, uh, we're here obviously tonight to uh present three uh purchase orders for uh the you know, majority of the technology equipment. Uh, that'll be followed by a number of different purchase orders in uh the December to January timeframe for furniture, fixtures and equipment. So uh, that process is well underway, uh, with the administration and staff. Uh, I think you've probably passed a couple of samples out in the hallway, um, uh, to varying degrees of success, so those things are being selected. Uh, budgeted, you know, the budget being compared and ultimately, uh, you'll see uh packages come for this board uh for final approval of the purchases for those items.
Any questions?
The update?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, wanna continue with the uh contract change?
So, um, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, first is something that was approved at the uh school building committee meeting that was held this past Monday, November the seventh. Uh, and that was a change, a contract change or substantially large, it was explained well by uh Suffolk, who was there and K B A was there, one with Colias, um, and Greg, I don't know if in your packet, it's listed as uh P C C O number eleven. Greg, just to summarize that, if you would, that is mainly with?
Uh, so there are a couple of larger change orders there that um that reflects updates.
Yeah.
I, I don't have it, but I know most of it are really reflect updates to equipment that uh school has purchased. Uh, and or, you know, from time to time, things are, are not included in the package, so if we didn't purchase, you know, something we need, uh, we ultimately have to pay for it and purchase that through the contractor. So uh, this really puts uh uh several shops into good working order uh with the newest uh version of equipment that they have uh over uh, just to put things into perspective, over the five years I've been working with Diamond here, uh, the district has received over ten million dollars worth of grant funding for new equipment. In addition to all your capital uh funding you've, you do on your operating budget, uh, it's an incredible investment in the um workforce here in the area. Uh, I would argue that it's one of the um best equipped and most um well-managed investments of uh current technical equipment in the state, uh frankly, uh, we've done I don't know, over a million square feet of buildings like this, uh, and this is uh the most well-equipped building we've done uh to date. I would suspect for the remainder of my career.
Very good. We want to hear.
Yeah.
Buy you a cup of coffee for that. That was awesome.
Oh, great, Timothy Stanley. Take a flourish.
Recommendation is to reaffirm E C C O number zero one one, my total home code, one million forty-two nine zero nine point.
Make that motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay, wanna go back on to uh technology purchases?
Yeah, just very quickly, but we also have a director of technology here tonight, in case you have any specific questions. Uh, but this is was also presented to the school uh building uh committee on Monday, November seventh. And that was the technology purchase orders, and I'll stop right on that because separate ones that are there are Greg and or Eric, who was, Benoit, who was our technology director. I'll let them explain if they need to, anything for the committee's information.
I'll do the basics, I'll do the hard stuff to Eric, so. We'll refer questions to him. So uh, there are three purchase orders in front of you today that reflect the majority of the infrastructure or the majority of the equipment for technology. The first of which is the hub proposal. That proposal is for network switches, uh, switches within the building, wireless access points uh and workstations uh for displays. So uh, really what that is, is the um the equipment that makes all of your network work. Um, I think that also includes firewalls, a couple of them that also keeps it secure. Uh, that proposal is uh one million two hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and one dollars and nine cents. That is uh the proposal that takes up most of these these, the, the majority of the money on these items. Uh, the second proposal is from Harbor, is the whole for the telephone system. Uh, so the building will be equipped with a voice over IP telephone system. Uh, that quote is for ninety-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars fifty-five cents. And third proposal is probably the most exciting one, uh, is from Pro A V Systems. Uh, that proposal for four hundred and ninety-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-six cents is for flat panel displays, dock cameras, um, trade hall displays, uh, portable signage, um. What else am I missing? Uh, so portable uh projectors and build a, building signage, so digital signs throughout its building. So this proposal also includes moving a fairly high number of flat panel displays the district has invested in over the last five years or so, uh, into the new building, so that a vendor will come in, uh, remove the s- displays, uh, safely transport it to the new building and then reinstall it. Uh, so uh, it takes a lot of work off Eric and his staff to try to move those things at a time where they'll be stretched pretty thin. Uh, not only keeping this building up and operational until we move out, but also getting that new building up and operational as you move in. So uh, we believe these are all uh very reasonable quotes. Uh, these are all off of uh state contract, uh, so they don't require. This, and uh, they, uh, I think we're all worked through Eric with uh our technology consultant and um are, are very responsible. I will note, uh, if you do have the cover sheet here, uh, that we do list a budget of one point eight million. Uh, that budget is what was originally included in the M S B A project and it just for quick math, uh, that's twelve hundred dollars per student, which is what the cap is on the M S B A reimbursement on that. Given that the district received additional funding, this board voted to uh raise the total project budget uh along with the sending communities also, uh, you know, uh, agreed to raise that budget. In that raising of the budget, there was another about billion dollars allocated to this, this line item and we're only about a hundred and ten thousand dollars over the one point eight, so um very, very good uh number wise in terms of uh coming in with, you know, not only within budget, uh, once it was expanded, uh, but well under. So I will say that there are two contingencies requested here of twenty-five thousand dollars. One is for uh printers, uh, just so we can make sure, uh, we get the right printers at the right spots, uh, to make sure that we get everything working in the buildings, so we're through that a little bit with Eric and his staff. Uh, the second is a contingency that is for Pro A V Systems for twenty-five thousand dollars. That is really to allow for um locations where we have remote displays for uh classrooms or shops, so uh if there's a, an interactive display that is for a teaching position, there might be a, a mirrored display, the same, you know, the same uh cast on it, but a little bit more remote. Uh, this allows them to, uh, there's a cable length requirement to get all that stuff to work. It allows them to use some extenders and things like that, uh, to get those items to work. Uh, if that contingency is used, uh, it'll be built. If it's not used, then uh it won't be built with our package project.
But one of the uh, Chairman, one of the questions that the committee had was on the, on the mobile phones, the classroom for communication, so if the internet goes down, what do they do? Those were some of the things that were brought up in the committee now. Um, Eric and Carl Suwiko, it's a deck record, this is the new technology, this is what's happening. Um, they don't run uh copper wires to classrooms anymore, so they have phones, so teachers are gonna be required to have an app.
So, and so this, this proposal does have phones in it, so there are.
Phones in the classroom?
Phones in the classrooms, yes, yes.
That's not what we said the other day, that's why they grow organic.
No, there's phones in the classroom, they're voice over IP, so they are, they are voice over IP. Uh, but they are.
They're not lines.
They're not, they're, they're, they're voice over IP, so they're not like copper lines like you would have.
Right.
Uh.
But the other.
But, but there are physical phones for the building. Almost every location, that said, uh, the voice over IP system does have a number of features that you don't have with a, a copper based system to allow you to do some other things. Uh, but classrooms do get a physical handset as well as offices. That's, that's run by the internet, uh, it's, it's a copper wire, but, but then it goes to the phone, but.
Anyway, that, that was the big question, some people worried what is the internet, but how do we have communication? And um, the Indicom will always work, that's not, it's not an internet system, so the Indicom will work. Um, the uh, we'll see how thing with the, with the phone.
You want me to explain that?
Yes.
Okay, so that was one of the things that I raised is that the added feature of these phones, which is really, really nice, especially because our teachers switch and share classrooms and go off to another way is that you have the ability to download the app on your phone. That if, if I, let's say I'm in the library, wanna call, make a, a parent phone call, I can call from that app and it looks like I'm calling from Diamond and they will never have your cell phone number. If I'm in the building and someone is calling me at my extension and I have my cell phone on me, doesn't have to go to voice now, 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 I can pick it up and answer them like I was sitting in my office. So, and that's at home, no matter where it can go through. So that's like the difference. Right now, when we're looking for a teacher to cover a class or something, we can't find them because they're not in the library, they're, someone else is using their classroom. We're interrupting the instruction by having to go over the P A system, which I don't like.
Just a comment.
Yeah.
We use this system at my, my work and um, same, same idea, you can download the app to your phone, it's an excellent system. And you can actually read your voicemails from your phone as well.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You can delete it if you need to.
Yeah.
Right from.
So a lot more versatility than true landline.
And they rarely go down, rarely.
Uh, do we have any questions, or ever wanna add it and?
Uh, just, you're incorrect, the phones will rely on the internet, we are looking at bringing redundant. Uh, so. Yeah, keep us up.
All right, you have to.
One, Brian. Have to have your phone. Have to have your phone.
Hey, yes.
They have a monitoring device.
All right. Uh, recommendation is to reaffirm the technology purchase orders as submitted. A motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Moving on to the M S B A project expenditures. So, Mr. Frasso is trying to enjoy her time down in Florida with her family, well deserved vacation. Uh, which the weather was a little more cooperative down there, a little warm, but it is what it is. Uh, the uh tool that we have there is Colias, Colias has submitted, uh, expenditure and it is stamped at the end, as you see, that, that valued out at eight million seven one thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars, then thirty-one seconds.
Not calling. There's this. Hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-six.
This is why I come to Moses. There's nothing to say about. All right.
They start with the.
Nine. Nine twenty-six.
One, one twelve four here.
Yeah, one, one four, one four. And we're on the good glasses tonight. Okay, yeah, and then move around, yeah, so who, who just approve? I suppose is one twenty-nine four seventy-six point forty-eight is the expenditures out of that. And Suffolk, there we are, Suffolk has been emailed to you to the size of that. Nearly seventy-one two ninety.
I was in a. It, it says that, it just, it says Suffolk has advised the model?
Well, that's the next, that's coming, that's coming up on an email.
But it's kind of more million?
Yeah, it's one from last month.
Yeah, all of it, sorry.
This one's correct.
Correct. This one didn't make it to last month's meeting, so we had to do it over the, uh, an email that I sent off to the board's hearings.
All right, recommendation is to approve the M S B A funding expenditures as submitted, so need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Yeah, this is coming back.
All right, moving on to uh Suffolk application number twenty-four, that's the uh required.
That's the actual nice one that's coming up to be, that is uh ten million one hundred and eighteen thousand five eighty-four point ninety-four, uh, less than one that's the right figure right here. He was told Mister Jennings first.
He was told Mr. Jennings first, he added this uh
Recommendation is to uh reaffirm the Suffolk application. Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one we're going to take out of order is um the admissions up.
So um we did submit the admissions policy through the CHAMP's portal last month. Unfortunately, they did come back with some recommendations, even though we had used the template that they had provided for us. Um so the recommendations included us having um attraction enrollment and retention information embedded within the policy. So we did add a paragraph to the first page that includes all of the featured events that we're hosting here at the school, which include an open house, a virtual information session, virtual admissions night, virtual school tour, in-person school tour during middle school hours. Um after acceptance, we invite our families in for accepted students night, placement testing, freshman orientation. We also organize annual parent teacher night to offer families the opportunity to come in and meet the educators and along with this, all of our information is posted on social media, including Facebook and Instagram. Um during these events, we also have um special education services available and um multilingual services available, so we have translators in both Portuguese and Spanish. So um the Department of Education was requesting that we include that in the policy, so we've added that to the first page. The second amendment that they were requesting that we make to the policy is we have a timeline on page four and they were requesting
Can you hold on one second?
Oh, sure.
We we didn't have in front of us.
Well, there's a two more on your desk, but we tried to set down.
Thank you, sorry.
Oh, no worries. Um so on page four, we have revised to the um timeline chart, so we've added um the deadline for the school counselors to upload attendance and discipline to that chart. Um February third through thirteenth, um Diamond will verify all of the weights for the lottery, which include the application being completed, the attendance, the conduct and the letters of recommendation. And then February fourteenth to March first, anybody that would like to file an appeal is welcome to do so. And then we have announced our lottery date, which will be March sixteenth with the snow day of March seventeenth. I hope it doesn't come down to that. And then the other um amendment to this is if you flip to page E, there was no um recommendations as far or guidance for an appeals process, so we have str- uh struck out the appeals process on page E and we have put in place a new appeals process. So the appeals process is going to be the ability to appeal how many entries you have in the lottery. So you'll be able to do that prior to the lottery taking place. Um the lottery again will be March sixteenth, you have to appeal fifteen days prior. So you'll have from um the middle of February until March first to appeal and the appeals will go to Superintendent Director, Mr. Brian Bentley, and we'll be able to look into how many chances you have into the lottery and then after the lottery takes place, you will not be able to appeal.
The uh recommendation from the subcommittee was the forward. So anybody have any question? On the missions revised?
Then I think Mr. Diver has, you know, you were the only one out here earlier, it's important to note that um we still do have strong connections with the sending schools, so we've been out on tour a lot by request from the sending districts. Uh we've gone out to seven schools, tomorrow we're going to Swansea into Morton. And then uh the open house is coming up on the twenty third of this month. And then we're hosting an in-school tour per Desi during middle school hours on November tenth and we have a thousand December um tenth and we have um a thousand students registered to come through that day.
Yeah, we have to until we have powers to get it through.
So there's a, the good news is there's a lot of interest right now, we have over six hundred fifty applications right now.
That was a Saturday, it was the only really working.
It has to be during middle school hours. So.
All right, any any other questions? So the recommendation to approve the emissions policy as submitted. Do you have motion? All in favor?
Aye. Yeah. Thank you. Good job, very much. Thank you. Good luck. Yeah.
All right, uh I could, I'm gonna take one more out of order and that would be house building uh subcommittee report.
But how's we get that, Jen? Online, Jen Jen is not online, I think, it's just Mariano online.
Yes, I am online.
Jen, so yours?
Alrighty, thanks friends, um so I've spoken with Mr. Cabral and the floor system is complete with um subfloor decking all in place. All the east and west facing exterior walls have been built and are standing. Currently working on the north and south facing walls, hoping to have those up within the next couple of weeks and then begin the garage construction. Obviously, weather permitting. Um they did have to redraw the basement um layouts due to the location of the bathroom in the basement not being feasible for the best placement for the furnace. Our drafting department did that. Um the plumbing work is all in place and we're waiting on inspection, which should happen probably by mid next week. Um Jeff has been in touch with the roof installer, the roof trusses will be delivered the first week of December. There was a change in the roof trust design to eliminate a bump out for a fireplace. Um the floors have been framed to the original design, the homeowner was made aware that the roofing subcontractor will be responsible for remu- removing that section and patching it. No issues with obtaining any materials for the windows or the doors and they've all been ordered. Metal fab is currently preparing the furnace unit and pre-assembling some of the ductwork. Most pub plumbing fixtures have been uh selected and they're in the process of making sure that they're on the uh Massachusetts approved plumbing product list. Um Jeff is working out the details with the homeowner on the bathroom vanities and will be building uh the cabinets in our cabinet making shop. The homeowner did request for us to build pantry cabinets and also laundry room cabinets, which were not in our original plans. Um but we've uh declined to do that because we just don't have the time to get that done and that kind of wraps up the house build update.
That's you, Mr. Chair, um are we doing the kitchen cabinets?
We are not.
So.
We're doing some bathroom vanities, two different bathroom vanities and some laundry vanities, but the wall cabinet in the uh laundry facility, we're not doing.
That that's, that always was a sophomore job to do in the school and it was something they always did, the kitchen cabinets, they did the bathroom cabinet. So we took away the kitchen ones. Why was?
I I believe it has to do with um they have family friends of some sort that are in the kitchen building business and that's where they're going with.
In that, so why did we refuse to build the other cabinets? If we're not building the kitchen ones, because that was always in the frameworks for the sophomore class, they used to build those cabinets. So it's
I believe it's timing issue with this house, because the house is a little bit bigger and has more complexity to it. So they they've had to back off somewhere and that was one of the places they backed off.
Yeah, but our sophomores are not at the cla- at the uh job site.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
Our sophomores are not at the job site.
They are not.
No, so that way the sophomores always had a piece of the house, it was to get them involved in the house and it gave them something to learn how to build cabinets.
Their process, we have a couple of um outside, other work work within the community, trophy cases and stuff like that, we're doing it in several different towns around our community, um and that's what our sophomores are doing for cabinet work.
All right, then. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all we have. Hold. I didn't have a few more. Yeah, uh Jen?
Yes.
You want to do the community projects while you're on it?
For sure.
For the chair.
Um so you should have the 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 printout of the community projects that we've been working on all year. Um there are some updates on that. In uh Fall River, we have so a a lot of stuff going on over on Blossom Road. So we've installed and backfilled the po- the power, um and they're working on the lighting out there. The generator is in place, the electrical work is done. For the generator, the HVAC students are laying the gas lines. Um over at the admin building for Fall River, we have ordered the material to do to replace some historic wooden railings and spindles. That's a, we do expect that, I think, next week for the materials. Um maybe tomorrow, but mo- most likely next week. Um HVAC it has been working on um heating system, um filter systems, cleaning out the systems, putting in new coils where needed all around um town at the different municipalities. Um over in government center, we're working on a directory sign, um we anticipate completion by next week. Um Fall River Police Department, we're doing some, we're doing a breaching door for training purposes. That is well underway, we do have a student that is connected to the detective chase that has ordered this door and they're allowing that student to do the work for that particular project. So they don't come back in, they just started their academic cycle, so they'll get back into it when they come back into shop. Um we have a Diamond Alumni Association going on with uh programming and web, clients met with the students, the expectations have been laid out and they're beginning to gather all their assets to complete that website. Um Fall River Water Department, they were working layout designs for a second floor. They're still, the drafting is still working on the first floor plans, which they have to complete um before they can start working on the second floor. Over in Somerset, we have the water department, facilities has been over there pretty regularly. Um they're working on cleaning up all the the water pipes, sanding them down, um laying on a new coat of paint, they've been clearing the the debris in and around the properties. Um they've done some flagstone work. Uh constructed a new wall um as they start to prepare to build a couple of offices in another section of the um water department building. Somerset Library, we have carpentry grade ten kids over there, they're going to be doing a nine foot display case. They've met with the client, um they're starting to do their layouts and then they'll start making the actual cabinets and then installing them. Over in Westport, again carpentry students are working on some trophy cases, uh they're about, they expect that this particular project will be done in and around Christmas break. Um it's well underway, there's beautiful pieces all around the shop. Um so we got our tenth graders working on that. Over at the Westport Athletic Association, we built some con- um sheds over some of the um water pumps. We have the material priced out and ready to order, but what we're trying to orchestrate is coordinating our students on the field when athletics isn't on the field, um so that's been a little bit challenging recently. Um and now that we're getting into the much colder weather, they're probably going to be over at the other facilities and uh Somerset working on that office space, the new office spaces within the uh water building. Uh we have Westport Land Trust for the electrical crew, they've completed, they've gone as far as they can on a couple of those projects. So this is a two-week project that they that uh Mr. Chase has picked up to do be- between now and when he gets the go-ahead from Jeff over at the house to start running wires over there. So it's just um what he's doing is they're they're putting in new lighting fixtures in and around um the uh Land Trust Building over there. Um again, a couple of weeks worth of work and that's about it. Um and that wraps up the progress, there have been a few completed pieces. We've done some stuff for Durfee High School that's been completed, plaques, um plaques for Diamond Alumni have been completed. We did some uh repair work for a for the police department car. Um and they've all been moved to the completed section of our paperwork here. And that wraps up outside community projects.
All right, any questions on the outside project?
I notice uh Swansea doesn't have many projects, they they very don't typically have many projects. Have they not submitted anything from the town or we have not reached out to them and expressed interest to say, hey, if you have anything, uh that you're looking?
I don't know if anybody has reached out, but we did do a um a sign for a meeting house.
I see it's in queue.
Yeah.
You know, we've been getting other police cruisers, um probably about four months ago, five months ago.
Last year, last
Was it last year?
Last
All right, um I'm just curious. Maybe I can reach out to the town administrator and see if she can reach out to her entity, see if this is a community project that that need to be done.
Absolutely.
And uh I'd like to just see that uh get into the town a little more, get our students out there. Yeah, the rea- the reason now we look at that, uh Deb, is we like to share between the four communities and uh concentrate on all four, not um and I know sometimes some towns are a little slower than others, sometimes you get into that town and there are all the other things, uh other uh town uh town bodies start saying, hey, I'd like this done, that done, so it gets going uh like a snowball. So uh but uh we need to make sure that we spread it to the other communities and um so we're so we're everywhere, not just in s- in uh certain areas.
Absolutely, and if there's anybody that, you know, you want to forward some contact information my way, I can certainly make some phone calls there or go out and give them a nice little swag bag to make sure they understand all the the great stuff that our students are doing for the communities.
No, I appreciate it, I'll reach out to the town administrator and see if she can uh touch base with some of her her town entities to see if they need anything done.
Sounds great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Right, moving on to uh the personnel.
Yes, um before you look personnel, are the list of appointments that have been taking place um nothing out of the ordinary here, um these are people who are fun, switching positions here, new instructors in in plumbing. Um new instr- are created, they're new part-time clinical instructor. Uh and then some long-term uh substitutes for people who aren't out. The tutors are through the after-school programs that we have, we have had some resignations also. A part-time clinical instructor, a plumbing instructor, it's to govern and advisor. Uh pointing out retirements from some long-time employees of Diamond who have set a retirement date for themselves. Mr. Gaston Lovett, Gus Lovett, October thirty first twenty six. Captain Mello is a instructor, she's at the end of twenty six, twenty seven, smooth year. Is that is there? Uh quick question, uh this came two years ago, we had a huge problem with this, you you know and I know, people get both get phone calls. But remember, we, just because we put somebody in the long term at HVAC, we don't want to leave them there if we get somebody qualified to teach the kids, we don't need a babysitter, we need a teacher.
Yeah, see, I I can answer that, uh in the, let's go to the plumbing shop first, they had a uh two teachers that uh had retired, resigned for other reasons, we have one filled, he started on this past uh Wednesday. Was it Wednesday, he started Wednesday and the next one is starting on the Monday before Thanksgiving. He gave us two, notice he's a Diamond graduate, he's coming back to teach, that'll have a full complement. In HVAC, we do have a long-term person who is out, but the person who's in there is is qualified because it's the it is the sheet metal component of HVAC. He is working with the students on that, understanding how to uh fabricate and install any kind of dump work, duct to work that will be done, other than that, the programs and capacity.
Okay, just just so I can make phone calls.
Yeah.
Either.
Uh happy to report to not on here, but as time aside, uh as we talked about the L P N program a little earlier, the L P N program has filled a third spot there, they are in full complement, that instructor will be uh getting just about two weeks. Start. It's it's nice to be able to say, looks like we have a full complement of teacher.
Good, thank you. Moving on to uh advisory board appointments.
Yes, these are new people, so uh I said it that way for a reason. So on this, we have uh I think we can count, there are five people who have submitted and would like to be appointed. Uh Mackenzie Baker, the medical assisting program, her credentials there. Daniel Bobozer in advanced manufacturing, nineteen nineteen eighty three graduate. Anna Clara, made up Freitas, programming and web. Uh David Medaris, plumbing. And wants automotive technology. And the recommendation is to appoint Mackenzie. medical assisting, Daniel for advanced manufacturing, Dana Programming and Web, and David for plumbing. Uh, and Amin Watts, automotive technology, to be identified to advisory board for a term of three years.
Need a motion to approve?
So, in a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Bringing the, up to uh, up to speed on something that happened at our last school committee meeting, you were asking about, we always appoint the new people, how about renewing those who have been with us, we don't have, they say three years, it seems like they're on, uh, but they not ever renewed, that list is being done, those people must have been a quality sorry form. We have given them an equal deadline, in order to be, if you are interested, interested to leave up. Uh, we expect most of them to, if not, we will reach out to the ones who have yet to respond, are you still interested? Uh, setting that deadline, that list will be brought before this committee also, in order to renew their appointment to the advisory.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you guys for that.
Uh, C will be coming back for that.
Correct.
Uh, let's see, the discussion of composition salary range.
Uh, this is based on the fact that we have advertised for an accounting with uh, Ms. Petrosso moving as director of finance into a position. Tell us the vacancy for the account, uh, we have advertised for one, I'm happy to report that we have in fact, uh, receiving books like uh, three qualified individuals, appointments are being made with them to come in and be interviewed uh, next week, Mrs. Petrosso's return. Um, but I also have a recommendation, October twenty-ninth law changed in the state of Massachusetts with what's called transparency in day. And part of that was that when you advertise a job and you have a certain number of employees, and we have it. Is that you must put in there also the range of what the salary is, and no range was established on this particular position. So this is again, up to the committee, if they want to set a range, continue the way we're going, but just bring it here.
When, when was this advertised, you just said October twenty-ninth it came into effect?
October twenty-ninth it came in, we advertised before that.
Okay, so we're good here, we can, we, we don't, we can just go into, you can, you can um, that, interview these people, come back, and then they can go into executive session and give a range that we can go negotiate with that person.
My question is, moving forward, this is about then.
Okay.
That, my question is whether or not you wanted an updated, if you wanted an updated uh, advertisement to go out, or are you comfortable the way that is? That's all I'm bringing.
If you have three applicants.
We did, actually we have four, I take that back, one came in today.
Alright, I, I think if those fall through, then.
Then we, no, then we would do it, I, I was confused Brian too, so if we, if we advertise before the October twenty-ninth law change.
We did.
Okay, so we're good that we put two, two negotiated, I would now go to the interviewing process on, with the people and uh, you can discuss potential salaries with them and then it's gonna come back. Go to executive session, negotiate a contract with non-union personnel, this is the non-union personnel, I'm out. And then we can take it from there, in the future follow the law and put a range.
Just, just wanna make sure we're okay here, yeah, thank you for that, correct. Moving on to uh, east of the tram, we have quite a few requests, we'll try to go through them as succinctly as possible. Uh, the first one comes in from Miss Meredith Chivo, Culinary Ops instructor. She has submitted an out-of-state travel request for students to tour Roger Williams University as a possible cooperative education placement on November twenty-first uh, from eight AM until twelve-thirty, and the recommendation is to approve that student travel request uh, for the teacher, Meredith Chivo, uh, Culinary Ops to go to Roger Williams University with students eight AM until twelve-thirty, this has been done also in conjunction with Mister Marcus, it was our cooperative uh, education coordinator. Full support of having students actually see this side of that.
Need a motion to approve, so we'll, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, the next is on to the Skills USA organization, they've submitted an overnight travel request
for students to attend Skills USA Fall State Leadership Conference, which is held in Marlborough, November twenty-third to November twenty-fourth. The recommendation is to approve this student travel request uh, for Skills USA advisors and students to attend East Fall State Leadership Conference being held in Marlborough, November twenty-three to November twenty-four, is it overnight?
Need a motion to approve, so we'll, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, uh, Mister Randall Allender, HVAC instructor, has submitted two out-of-state travel requests
for students to tour NEIT in Greenwich, Rhode Island, December second, and again on December eleventh from eight AM until two PM, the recommendation is uh, for this instructor to travel with students to NEIT in Greenwich, Rhode Island, December second to December eleventh, eight AM to two PM. Uh, this is in the HVAC, who, who are these?
What are they going, yes, eighth?
Uh, the, the New England Institute of Technology Program has either a career pathway, if they wanna continue their education or to ask questions of the qualified instructors that are there.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, uh, Mister Mitch Sweet, drafting instructor, has submitted an out-of-state travel request for students to study
the Gilded Age Architecture in Newport, Rhode Island, December sixteen, from eight-thirty AM until two-fifteen. And the recommendation is to approve the student travel request submitted by Mister Sweet for students to study Gilded Age Architecture in Newport, Rhode Island, December sixteen, twenty-twenty-five, eight-thirty AM to fifteen. Mister Sweet has done this consistently over the years, um, because he does point out the architectural features and how it relates to the program.
Need a motion to approve, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Mister Ray Machado has submitted two overnight travel requests for students to participate in the DECA District Eight Competition
being held in Hyannis, and the second one on January eighth, ninth at the DECA State Conference being held in Boston, March twelfth through the fourteenth, so there's two women there, discovering both districts and the states. And the recommendation is to approve student travel requests submitted by Mister Machado for the DECA District Eight Competition in Hyannis, January eighth, ninth. And the DECA State Conference being held in Boston, March twelfth through March fourteenth.
Need a motion to approve, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Machado would also like to know the committee's wishes, if anyone wishes to uh, as a judge, as I know some of us went there last year.
Do I get to say one?
Sure, uh, there is a competition and they're always requesting judges, last year, members of the committee volunteered their time to go down there to uh, Hyannis to be judges, if you are interested in that, we know all that. You're already here, we are there. Yes, I, I haven't signed up yet, but this one. Yeah.
Yeah.
And. Down with yourself, Mister Baker, I think I'd be interested also.
It's interesting.
Very interesting. Let's do manuals. Um, we can't be all in the same room, cause they have to. It's sure, sure, I'll get it back to you on that. Please do, it is, it is January eight, and it's a one-day down in there. Oh, so it's not false, it's a school committee night.
Check, we don't get to stay over.
So it's not. It's not a school committee night, so I did like, who won?
It's the last.
And then last year, we came back rather quickly to the main committee on that.
Lane.
I like it. You have one more on student travel, what come?
Uh, yeah, this is metal fabrication, Mister David Zalcina has submitted an out-of-state travel request for students to tour local fifty-one Pipe Fitters Union in Riverside, Rhode Island, January sixteen, eight-thirty AM, two PM. And the recommendation is to approve that student travel request for the Pipe Fitters Union, January sixteen, eight-thirty AM, yeah.
Good, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, now we have a couple of class trips coming up, thank you. The first is the sophomore class, advisors have submitted out-of-state requests for students to participate class field trip to Lady Compost in Bristol, Connecticut, May twenty-seventh, eight AM to six-thirty PM. And the recommendation is to approve the student uh, travel request, sophomore class. Students participate Lady Compost, Bristol, Connecticut, May twenty-seventh, uh, eight AM until six-thirty PM.
Need a motion to approve, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, and the next one and last one for tonight is the junior classes, and after hours travel request for students to participate in a class field trip to Six Flags in Agua, May twenty-seventh, it is the same day as a sophomore class from eight AM until six-thirty PM, the recommendation is to approve student travel request, junior class, Six Flags, Agua, May twenty-seventh, eight a.m. to six-thirty P.M.
Do you, Mr. Jim, and the only question I have is, do we have enough buses?
I was just gonna ask the same thing, yeah. How's that affect our busing?
Yeah, we normally um, go out for the coaches, yeah.
Okay, okay, you do coaches.
Yes, if you do the coach.
I was gonna say the same thing.
And the administrative team in the, in the worry of having enough chaperones to go with the kids, the administrative team is planning that because we will only have freshmen in the building at this time, to do some culture building activities with the freshmen with the remaining staff.
The seniors would have already signed out, that says, this is like, as I just said, this puts the juniors, see, uh, juniors and sophomores out. So it leaves us with um, the ninth group, never going to focus in on that.
Sounds like a fun time.
Looking for a sponsor for an ice cream truck.
Alright.
Need a motion to approve?
So, vote.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Uh, okay, Jeff.
Coming to both committees is the discussion and approval of the Diamond Food Science Course. Behind the arm sheet, this is again, the background on this, this is the one that you're very familiar with. Students do something special, they combine uh, culinary with the science behind it. Two teams, one culinary, one science, they work cooperatively with the students, it's a very successful program. The recommendation is to approve the Diamond Food Science Force as.
Need a motion to approve, need a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think both won that with, with Selagi and, but they did one year.
No, that's it.
They involved him and the uh.
That's a good question.
Sounds interesting.
Uh, moving on to uh, G, request establishment.
This is new, uh, one of our employees here, uh, has come forward to request a goal, our Christian club has submitted. The description of what this is, is here with a number of students who did sign up, signing backwards. Mister Christopher Lopez has come forward indicating that he has been approached by students and they are on the last page that would like to uh, participate in this kind of a club. It is something that is facing the grounds of the high students, and looking at the club description, it is a place to connect, grow, and re-encourage. The non-denominational fellowship club will be a welcoming, non-denominational group, for students to build community, a safe space to come together for friendship, fun, prayers, we will meet, pray, Bible as you see there, discuss and read live topics and support each other. So whether you're strong in faith or just looking for a positive, supportive group of friends, everyone is welcome. And it's being seen by Mister Lopez and his wife, Miss Castro.
Mister Jerry, man's got legal counsel, this, okay. I don't see any.
There's none, there you go, that, it's a negotiation.
Just don't wanna get, oh, yeah.
I don't think so.
Nice, negotiation.
Station. We keep not finding any negative.
We have you, I don't know, I just don't wanna.
Because you don't have to do those, these are the ones who, and if there are eighteen people who have signed up, they're not looking for anything. Just looking for students who similar feelings about things in life, wanna get together to discuss.
I think it's awesome.
I'm excited.
Yes.
Need a motion to approve, so, need a second? That all in favor?
Aye. Hey, next before you is uh, some vocational programs with name changes, but I am gonna defer to Mister, like I said, that she was kind of on the forefront of stating to the advisory board, uh, teachers, and each of these programs as identified.
Yep, so you can remember, we talked about when we, we were talking about doing the two-plus-two's and working with the departments to really identify what was some of the strength and in areas and what were some of the areas that needed to improve that you're gonna see later on in the report, but um, when we looked at the labor market blueprint, we saw a huge disconnect because we were calling uh, vocational programs the same name as the SIF code that the state gives us, that was the framework in which it worked. Um, so what we did is we put it as an advisory agenda uh, item on there for each of the departments to discuss, like a, a great example is advanced manufacturing. When fourteen-year-old students go home and they say, I wanna be in advanced manufacturing, uh, parent doesn't know in advanced manufacturing.
You're speaking to them.
Correct, yeah, so, right, just like what does a business tech do? Right, you know plumbing, you know an electrician, you know culinary ops, you know what health, the health assisting, and you know a dental assistant. But you don't know advanced manufacturing, so I put it to the industry experts. Each of these committees went back and had a discussion, and we're calling it a new branding of our vocational programs to see if it aligns in Taylor's different interests. It also puts us in more alignment with the new frameworks changes that came across the state in the last two years. So before you, you have precision machining and engineering, which is the advanced manufacturing, the older advanced manufacturing. Business and finance, which is the old business tech. Mechanical, architectural, and the additive manufacturing engineering, which is the old drafting. And metal fabrication and welding, which again is the old metal fabrication and joining technologies, SIF codes that we were naming our programs. So I'm asking the committee, it's kinda timely, the um, building project. They've been jumping down my throat, and I said, no, that was a process that I wanted to do this through is, you know, getting the industry experts to validate and come up with that decision, um, and I needed to put it in front of you for permission.
Yeah, the only question I have was, you have two that they're framing for change, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, graphic dots and um, building your property.
Yeah.
Did those names change?
No, because they didn't suggest any changes in their advisory meetings, yes, so again, I did it, and they say, hey, you, do you wanna change? And I wanted to get to the industry, so we changed down that.
The building of property really has changed.
That's, that's because the frameworks, the frameworks have changed, so the frameworks, these names are more aligned with the frameworks revision, and that is where the difference.
So we didn't change the other two?
No.
Okay.
We did not, so and additionally, the IT department has also passed, and again, timely. Um, we've always known them as the IT department, they are requesting technology services because it's a little more up-to-date of what the, the services that they provide for our students and our staff and connecting them to all the resources that we have that is.
The recommendation is to approve the vocational programs and department name changes as presented.
Need a motion, we're gonna need a second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, take this with you tomorrow.
Uh, I've already got a note, I got with tomorrow's date.
Precision machining and engineering department has been working behind it, who's been in, I would pick up that for some time, for some time.
Yeah, when we stayed changed on them, I went all board, I, I had shirts embroidered with advanced manufacturing. Um, because I didn't wanna fight the system, I didn't really realize how much that was gonna have an effect on our program. And so we really started to look at it, and just the simplest thing of Google and advanced manufacturing, unless you're in the business, it's like listening to Charlie Brown's teacher. Um, and so when you Google precision machining, it lays out exactly what we do to a T. Um, and our advisory board was, you know, twenty-two signatures of them all in support of that. Uh, I was actually there, recommendation to add the engineering part, because I was just looking to go back to precision machining, which was two names ago. Uh, but they're, they were very correct in stating that we do work with engineering and we do a lot of in-house engineering or fixture-ing and uh, the way we set up our jobs, so um, it's, it's, it's needed, and I think this can help a lot, because when people don't know, they Google. Right, and when you Google advanced manufacturing, it's far, they're just by anybody.
Have you stressed this to the uh, freshmen that are coming in, so we are more positive?
Yes, I, well, I personally toured each freshman group on their last day, um, and I talked to me about the trade for about forty-five minutes, showed them the projects that we work on, the equipment that we work on, how it relates to industry. Um, and so I haven't really, I didn't wanna do the spoiler alert, give this away before uh, it was approved. Um, but I was reading on that, I always talk about how advanced manufacturing can be so misleading, it's like the general term like landscaping. You know, you could be putting a tree in or putting a septic system in, if you're a landscaper, um, and that's the same way manufacturing is, so. Um, I'm excited about it, we actually, I have a sketch in my shop of our current bangle, holding on to a caliper that I actually drew myself, that I would love to have on some T-shirts or sweatshirts.
Nice.
Uh, I'm glad you're excited about it.
Alright, excited about it. Thank you. And thank you for your support. What I like is the way the process was done, it's not coming out top-down, it's the loop itself, I like that, it's the way it's surely developed.
Yeah, wow.
Great, a great idea, listen.
Very good. Uh, moving on to uh, fall advisory.
Hey, for the uh, for the fall advisory reports, the committee has had all of them that has been uh, sent to you. Uh, there is one that's here because uh, it was updated. Uh, I would like to be in your town, but is there anything on the uh, advisory board reports?
Yeah, so again, I, I gave, I started this one year with the department heads and really taken uh, an accurate. An accurate count of the data we collect over the last couple of years and gave them the opportunity to go through. And do a two plus two, like what are the two things that are working for us and what are the two areas that we need to. So we have some. We have some comments that are going. I mean, there is a lot going on for vocational teachers in this building right now besides a normal instruction, right? We have to be realistic. They went and handed new vocational frameworks that they have to align all their programs to. They have the inventory, every single piece of where it's going in the term shift surplus and work collaboratively, obviously, while educating the students. With the the building committee. So um what we've done is we, you will know, we'll get official notice, but. Our new CTE person has applied for a high school instruction grant that's going to help us with curriculum. Um and to be able to pay teachers beyond the school day to get some of that work done because it really just needs to get done during the time that we have. Um we're really focusing our our related teachers have also gone into the vocational programs to cover breaks in prep period. Which has been a little bit, a lot different. Um so that instruction is going all the time. And we've really been focusing on work wise readiness um to make sure that we are. Talking about teamwork, not just in the facet of ourselves, but also within our organization. You may have seen that we've already surpassed last year's co-op at this point and already passed the state's fifty percent mark of a senior class out. And again, I want to stress the importance of the department heads and the senior teachers working with Mr. Massey. Um we have some plans to really fold our co-op employers to right back to our advisory boards to make sure that it's a seamless process. Of advising us on the curriculum based upon what they're seeing missing in the industry. Because that is an important circle that becomes more seamless. Um we do have areas for growth in there throughout all of our programs and. We've been looking through our advisory minutes. We've been talking with our co-op employers and just some general observations having to. Vocational administrators on staff is our employer communication. We definitely need to up our ante on that. We realized going into the new building, um all vocational programs are supposed to be aligned to what's called the NEOS checklist. As industry as well, um that we're going to have to do some serious work around updating our NEOS checklist because we're going to have. A whole entire different building and our program promotion, which you just approved, which is. Good because I think it puts us in the mindset of really modernizing the new diamond with some new names and some new branding. Um the names, thank you. That will be a big first step, but Jen and I realize that the work ahead of us is. It's going to be very busy, so. Um but we have a good plan and, you know, I I think it. Not is that I think she's been hitting the ground and really working, rolling up her sleeves with the vocational departments, which I think has made a huge difference this year. So I'm going to give kudos to her.
Uh I'm going to uh capitalize only a little bit about what uh we have said. Because on top of looking at everything, you know, the way we're doing this type of patient programs. Mrs. Wickers has taken a good hard look at our academics and our scheduling processes and how we can. Get more off of what we're doing from our teachers. I just want to give a little preview of what could be happening. We're not presenting this tonight.
Yeah, and I'm I'll be honest and transparent. When we voted out MCAS, right? We thought that that was going to be a great thing, taking that away and, you know, is that mean that says hold my dear, right? Um what's coming down the pike in what is the initial recommendation from our governor on our new graduation requirements? I have concern.
So the graduation and competency determination will be coming before this committee uh in month of December. But this is kind of just getting, why is it going for me? And you may hear things in December saying, why is this changing? So this is the time to absorb uh exactly why things are coming down. We have the formal proposal being in December.
Yes.
There could be no action on this.
It just, I want to give you preliminary and I do believe that it send out the slides that I presented to the staff um. On a professional development day called education past end cast, right, is now. What they're looking at is taking, well, we used to have ELA math and science, used to be our MCAS exams. Well, first of all, they're going to still require us to keep the MCAS exams to use for our accountability score, which is our reputation. With the state and colleges based upon how our students perform. Uh in addition to that, the state is planning on, they're proposing to administer end of course exams. Again, at that sophomore level, but they're also including history. So the challenge that we face right now is our students are in academics for ninety days. And for those of us that have been around for a long time. We made the same argument back in two thousand and one when MCAS was going to work. We were applying for a graduate. You were probably a high school student at that time.
Uh two thousand and nine? No.
Probably said that you you held on to it for it, but um you know. We made the argument that our our students were getting ready to go to uh work. Right? And they should be held to the same standard. And the state said, no. You are going to be held to the same standard. And, you know, we fought it for a long time and then we realized we might have can do this because our kids get half the time. It is ninety days. And right now, they're core academics of fifty-seven minutes. If you compare that to a student that might go to one of our Sunday towns high schools, they have a hundred and eighty days. And they, that equates to a hundred and seventeen hours of instruction. And we are trying to do the same thing in eighty-five point five hours. We'll figure it out, but I do have concern because it's going to impact. We're going to have to make some changes. Um, you know.
What would this take effect?
Uh well, the timeline for this is in December sometime. We are going to get the initial draft recommendation from the Commissioner of Education. And then in June, he is going to submit to us his final report. Well, I'm I didn't, I'm not done. With what's going to be required. So the end of the year assessments is one thing. They are also playing on requiring a MYCAP, which is a guidance college and career plan that's done within four days. That's not a bad thing. Um it's definitely be done for my guidance counselors. They are requiring financial literacy as a required course for every high school graduate. I don't think that that's a bad thing in way. Okay, that's not a bad thing. Um and then what they're looking at is what they call seals of distinction. So in addition to that, it would be if you are bilingual student. For example, you could speak and write in both languages, you will get a seal of bilinguality. If you graduate with a district recognized credential, so you can get a seal of CTE. But um in addition, but the kids would have to, and wanted to meet the graduation requirements, they would have to successfully. Do all of these things.
So you're saying the MCAS is still going to be used for accountability? So does that mean the students are still going to have to take? Because I know when they they cut the MCAS off for graduation, there's a bunch of students who just didn't take. They didn't want to.
No, we still have to take it.
So now the kids have to take it. The law is just not a requirement for graduation. They're still going to have to take it.
They're still going to have to take it until, until they create their new state administrative exam and then that will figure out. So they basically, again, remember the meme, remember the meme that I told you, okay? Um they they are still holding us accountable for it. So mass core uh. Is what they call, and that's again, you have to think of it too. With AI technology and everything else, you know, our our number one responsibility is. To provide options for our students, right? They can go directly to work. They could take additional training for two years or two years of college, or they should be prepared for a four-year college, but they should graduate. From us having all those options available. But I think that the state is trying to do their best to make sure. That all of those things are possible. So um the mass core, for example. Which has been, you know, one in our teachers are, you know, we. They're having difficulty getting through the entire curriculum in ninety days, um which I don't blame them. Um especially coming from so many different schools and towns, right? Um but that means that they have to have four years of math and it's not a math course that I just make up and call it this. It's the full map and the full algebra curriculum, the full geometry. The full algebra two and full trigonometry. They're even recommended. Yes. With, yes. Now, science, they want three lab-based sciences. So biology, physics, and chemistry for every single graduate. Three years of history, US one, US two, and worlds. Um and civics, so they they they, again, it used to be three years upon and. Mass core, I don't know where to go with the civics. Again, I don't think that that's a bad option. I'd rather take the coursework. Over the end of the year assessment.
End of the year assessments are the main. I've never been a fan, I've never been a fan of.
And and realistically, you know, our vocational, uh vocational teacher, for example. When our kids leave qualified with an industry recognized credential or secured co-op position, right? Those are those third-party assessments that a vocational teacher can aim there on that I've done my job for my kids. I'm thinking about. Are how our academic teachers will feel when they don't know what's on this test. It's new. They're doing it in half the time. Right? And and that does things for the ego of our teachers, so.
May I ask if there's a group type of teachers who need or anybody else?
Uh well, okay, so the, yes, so the governor's council, the governor's council, good. We have a very strong vocational superintendent on that council. Who was the first person to teach me, Denise Fidgen, was to teach me that I could, as a culinary teacher, impact. My kids' MCAS scores because I was teaching math and showed me how to stand. Many, many years, we'll tell you. She is on that board and is a very strong advocate and has been keeping Mava in those conversations. The DTA, uh no, I'm sorry, the AFT and the NTA out loud us. Wrong voices in that room because they're calling you out for what it is, replacing one with another. And which was, you know, this is, you know, I I know it's will take what what our kids need. I've been around. I know the financial literacy, that's why I'm not arguing some of these points, right? These things that are important. You know, but when I, and my husband said, why would you vote no to repeal that MCAS? And I said, because if you take that away, they're just going to replace it with something else. And here we are. So um again, it sounds pretty, oh, the the other thing that they wanted required. Um was that for every single high school student to fill out a FASL. I'm like, you can't do that. That's, I'll tell you, I had a hard time. I had a hard time putting putting my social security number in the, in order for my daughter to either receive her merit scholarships. Had to fill out a FASL. It was like, don't tell your father I'm doing this, right? You know, but you had to in order to get scholarship. But I don't see how they're ever going to pass that. You know, that is a parent's decision. And.
Private information.
That is correct. In the world of cybersecurity, right? So.
Do you know about a question coming?
Yeah, but but look how long it took the first one to get on there. That's the discouraging point. There are, you know, and and again, I I just, you know, Dr. Warren and I, we've been following this very closely. We have made some huge shifts um. Over this last year, I mean, by December last year, I had all of our teachers, I saw it from in. All of our teachers issued, uh academic teachers issued common final exams. This year, we started, we're doing at beginning of the year and end of the year benchmark testing to monitor growth and see how pockets of strength and. You know, so that we can use that data to really move us forward in the curriculum. Um she stood behind me and all this, they have not been popular discussions with that academic teachers. Math and science are really struggling and and I understand that. Um they're working very, very hard and again, we just need to think of some things differently, so. There is um on three K student schedule change that I want to talk about because it falls into the why. I believe you understand it better if I go into the why, or you just heard the why.
So what we'll do when we get through, I did take it out of order, but it's just all falling into place. Um but very quickly disposed with the next item to get back to the K. Um that is a school calendar change. Um and this is to officially change our calendar from uh what it is to making December tenth now a half day of professional development. Uh that will in fact be canceled and March fourth replaces that half day. December tenth is going to be the tour day. Yeah, so there will be students here, but it's a half day of school.
For this.
For our students. Okay, faculty stays behind. March fourth, we still need that professional development because you can hear, there are many things that are coming down the pipe again, so to speak. So the recommendation is to uh modify the calendar. What you see here for December tenth, but March fourth replacing that for professional development um as presented.
How is J? This is J.
It is J. This is J. This is three point one J.
Need a motion to approve? Do you have a second? All in favor?
I.
Okay, and now here comes, you guys heard from Mrs. Wickers, now there is something else coming up.
Okay, so this, this again, I want you to understand the why. Okay, so currently, we have our students divided into A and B weeks, I guess. Right? And, you know, that's how we've always done our schedule. But essentially, in the backend of that, what you don't realize is that we're essentially creating four different schedules. So guidance meets with with each individual student, what are your post-secondary plans, you know, let's what are the courses, electives, you know, your pathway. You know, and they hand-schedule the kids. Um and what happens now is if you're a B-week student and you wanted to take statistics and. There's only two kids on that cycle that want to take AP statistics. But there's fourteen on this cycle that want to take it. Is right now we do one or two things. We either say, sorry, there's not enough kids to run it on this particular cycle. Or we say Russian roulette. What two kids are we taking off of this cycle? To move these kids over. And it's inequitable and it is a mess. It also doesn't allow us to maximize our use of resources with teachers. Because of our special education, IESL. We also have heard in in, when we had a student representative talk about the culture and how the kids don't know each other because. We automatically divide them into cycles. What I want to do, because I think we need to be very mindful about the lottery and not knowing what kind of kids we're going to get. Um we need to be very mindful in maximizing our resources into scheduling them for the academic classes for what the changes ahead. Is I want to schedule all fifteen hundred kids like there is no AB week. I want to be able to maximize the use of our academic schedule to do the right thing for the most students. And then tag them to their shop codes and then divide them. Into the A and B cycle. So right now, we get a lot of, when you change a kid's cycle, because it's only maybe fiftieth. You have ended their universe and they know it was only me that got changed, right? How can you say, yeah, that's right, it was only, that's what we have to say? And that is not the right thing to do for kids. It's not the right thing to do to maximize the support and the access. I mean, now, if we shuffle everyone, we're also building up who they get to meet. We're preparing them. You're not always going to have the same boss. You're not always going to work with the same people. You're getting to know more people from your town and your shop. When I lined kids up for graduation this year. And I said, okay, where's, you know, where's Joe Minard? Oh, I don't know her. She's on the other side. You're a senior in the same high school.
It's been that way.
And the, and again, when you're walking by, now if you're a B-week English teacher. You may have twenty-five kids in your class, but because only, you know, if you're A-week English teacher, you might only have six. It's not a good, not a sound business model where we could be doing things for remediation for our kids that are struggling a lot better and that is happening. All over the place. I, Brian and I can attest, what happens is this, what they call public resolution. Actessy and the amount of kids, the amount of public resolutions we had to answer to, which probably took about five or six hours of work. On each case this summer. Because the, you know, the kids, they change my week. Because the, you know, the kids, they changed my week.
Investigated by the Department of Education because a parent will complain to, and they have to accept it, problem, problem resolution. Uh, that my son went from A-week to B-week. He's distraught, he's, he's not getting help, it's this, he's that. But it's put it back on the school to investigate it. We, uh, entire questionnaire, look into alternatives, bring him back to the Department of Education, have an interview with the, with the person, it's all at my level because it comes here, okay, in order to resolve why did John go from A-week to B-week, or Mary from A-week to A-week? And the kid is now distraught, it's the end of the world, I'll never see my friends ever again. And it's like, it's, if you've got the shot that you want.
But that's not good enough.
No, but I didn't want to be a health assistant in A-week.
I, I, I only have, I have a concern, and I think I agree with you on that. If you don't be doing juniors and seniors, what happens if a kid is on co-op?
That we're gonna have, we're going to have to work through that, and I mean, it's, there're gonna be conditions. There're definitely gonna be conditions. Some of these kids have been in the same shop, maybe they have a documented reason why they should be apart from another. We're still gonna take vocational teachers' recommendations. But right now, what we're doing is saying, oh, sorry, you can't get the class that really gives you the support because you're on the other cycle. I think it needs to be a two-way conversation, but I think that, you know, we've been working with Mr. Mosses and right now looking at our employers too that take, you know, two kids, just to see what, what we're looking at and having the discussions early on with the employer to try to balance that as best as we possibly can.
They, they don't care, students. They like their shops. I would doubt that. It's when they get comfortable with an academic group. Now, they committed freshmen, they know nobody. But immediately they are bonding. Right? And sophomore year, should they go to the other cycle? They're still in the same shop. They're happy. But because they went from the whole, end of the world. Junior year, it's worse. You know, and it will, Mr. Jennings, as a member of the committee, it will take a careful look to make sure we're not jumping too quickly. Co-op is very, very important. I think a hundred and seventy-seven students are currently out on co-op. That's a significant number. That's just about half of the senior classes out there. Um, gotta be careful, that's not disruptive and it's seamless, right? It's the academics offerings that are so inequitable at times. They could only get this class on this side. But you're over here, we had a, uh, good exam two years ago, it was a teacher teaching, uh, it, it was, it was almost like how to get a job and how to go, the old economics course that you used to have.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll use it. Remember that, okay? But think of it only being offered on one side. Your friends are saying that I'm, I'm in a green class economics, I'm learning how to do whatever it is, I wanna get in, sorry. There's no rule, you gotta stay on B-weeks. Uh, and that's what's happening. We are not, we have good faculty who are well-paid. And we're not maximizing it when I go by a classroom. And this is my first thing I said to Leslie, I'm seeing two kids, four kids in a class. Okay, that's a lot of money.
So you're looking at seniors at that point?
Well, right, that was no sophomore class, a freshman class, because it's only offered on one side that these kids have been identified. So it's time to look at the whole picture. How can we say, we do a good job in shop? You know, it can only hold X amount of kids because of the shop's capacity. We have desks, twenty-five desks in a class. Why are there only seven kids? Is it the course? Is it the students? What is it? How can we maximize our resources of what we're paying our teachers? We could, what they do, maximizing the education of the way, and especially when the kids ask, that's a more common thing. I wanna take, uh, stuff without, I wanna take that, that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you can't. Can't, why can't I? But you can always ask for override, instead of twenty-five kids, we can take twenty-seven. Um, things of that nature, so it is looking at the whole system.
So what is, what is the plan?
So basically, right now, is, you know, you're an A, it, these kids are on A-week. Okay, so we find out what they need and then we see which ones we can offer.
What, what grade level we're talking about?
All, all grade levels, all grade levels. So we would just, we would shuffle them, right? And the reason why I say shuffle them, we see where their academic needs are. And we'll have a code in there, so we'll know, yeah, this is an original A-week student, original B-week student. Then we'll go back and sort by codes because it's important to balance the shop numbers on each side as well. Right? For their, their particular takes. So that it doesn't look, because right now, we're randomly picking a kid. And this, you can say this, if you wanted to switch another kid from one cycle, you have to pick a kid to switch with.
Yep, such a few fall.
Right, so.
Every year.
Yeah, so.
Yes. So in other words, you could be on the A-weeks freshman year, and then the next year you can be on B-weeks. You're not taking a lot of, a lot of the weeks in the middle of the season, uh, middle of the year.
We are the only school that has all grade level with this. The biggest schools have both grade levels on each week. But we are the only school that marries the kids into their weeks. Who's right in your benefit, shuffles them, every, every year to get a different sheet, and they call on even marine. They shuffle them every single year based upon this.
So that becomes our policy, there'll be no grapes for parents because that's our policy?
Because we're doing, we're doing it across the board, right now, right now, they, you know, I sat in all those meetings. And I can say it now, I, you know, yeah, the kid was, right, like, we had to pick, we had to balance, they needed something on this cycle, I had to move them, sorry. Right? Like, we weren't doing it for all, there isn't.
We sometimes feel as if we're implementing students by the teacher. You know, Mr. Dudley is the only one who teaches English composition. So these kids want English composition. Oh, how about Leslie? No, no, give her to somebody else. So it's like, no. How many people want English composition? Gather. It's forty kids, sorry, easy, twenty on one side, twenty on the other, that we can teach both courses. But no, instead we fill it up to twenty-five, then we shut down. It's gotta be more equitable.
It's good, and we.
Where you can give us something. One is the vote on this, but it just says as presented, but we have nothing actually.
You wanna visualize, visualize it? I, I absolutely can. And, and again, too, you know, the, we had talked about the possibility, and I know we discussed it in the meeting, about running with all freshmen on one side and sophomores on the other cycle and then splitting them that way because that would be another option. However, I, I really feel that that would be extremely unfair to have vocational teachers. Two, one, you've gotta merge, right? And two, you don't even know what classroom's gonna look like over there, you actually haven't built it. And I, because originally, that's what most schools do too.
That concept was that we put all the freshmen on A-cycle. Okay, same number of kids, same shops, but the teacher that's teaching sophomores, they teach freshmen and another one teach sophomores. Okay, when we switch it, those fans, so a freshman teacher would have to know what sophomores do. Sophomores would have to know what freshmen do.
Like coaching.
The only, the only problem I see with that is, that's all right, medical sustain or drafting. What are you doing carpentry? When the carpentry usually has fifteen students, he has a fifteen student.
They still.
Sophomore have this.
They still, they still.
But what are you gonna do in the sophomore area? Freshmen, they set up.
Freshmen would go to two teachers in carpentry.
Yeah, but, but what they gotta learn, what the sophomores are doing. Is the sophomore, sophomore.
Teacher would have to know.
Yeah, but the sophomore area is not set up with the same equipment, just like machine shops, that's not the same.
And, and what you're bringing up is something that was looked at, heavy like.
Yeah.
No, that's right.
And it.
The shops are good. We're pretty, we're comfortable with that. Um, it's on the academic side that there's an imbalance. We're just trying to bounce it up. I know, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Jennings.
Intervisualize it, you need to visualize.
To, uh, something that.
Yeah, we need to written up or if it's gonna be a policy, yeah, the policy.
Yes, it wouldn't be a policy, that's a procedure on how we schedule.
The recommendation at this time would be, uh, to, uh, if you want to, we can table this until the month of December when we bring you back. More definitive breakdown of what, so you.
Actually see.
Yeah, and, and want to have the discussion, right? You know, there's pros to cons to everything and, and it is a change. But the, you know, this is, these new graduation requirements are all also merging with a lottery system where we don't know what we are going to get. So if there's any time for us to do a resource allocation to make sure that we're prepared, I can't come in front of you in September and say, I need three more special IT. Is that, but what?
We know we can shuffle that down.
You can shuffle, that could have some others.
How to disperse the students. So, um, I would ask that the committee consider a, a recommendation to table this until the December.
Well, we don't mean to, yeah, we just, just carry it on, on.
All right, sorry for a long dialogue. I think we just.
And I appreciate you doing this because I, I see the need on two things, on one, to save money into, while, while we, in December, June. You'll also give the, everybody a chance, not just twenty-nine. And the other individuation was so correct. I didn't know the, all the other mechanics and the other mechanics drop.
No, you didn't.
I, because we never co-mingled.
Right.
So.
See each other once as a group, can we, as a school?
And gradually.
That's it. Autobotically knew.
I don't know what happened.
Small shrug.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
There are changes.
Great work again, though, isn't it? So.
Yeah.
It's lost, lost to this. Yeah.
Yeah. All right, moving to partnership with the, uh, B C C.
So this is something that I have previewed several people, but this is a partnership with Bristol Community College for an H V A C program. Very briefly, uh, they wanna utilize our, uh, shop over here at a cost to them to, uh, adult education, uh, it doesn't interfere with the high school. It's not exactly at night, they're looking for something at three-thirty in the afternoon till about six o'clock at night. This is fully funded by B C C. They are paying for materials, the use of space, the instructors, a supervisor, uh, and a teacher and a student aide. Uh, we'd be able to use, and they're paying for everything. Their enticement on this is that they have received quite a bit of money and they are looking to get into the adult education vocational component of education. They have room over there, but they don't have a facility to build. They can't put an H V A C shop inside an English room. Uh, but the, uh, president of, of the college, uh, said with Harris, came over here for a visit because he was interested in this. We met with his team, met and took him over there. He said, I like this setup. He says, let's try it. So two of his, uh, people, Angela and Brianna, Brianna have been meeting, they have met with myself. Leslie's been part of the conversation. Uh, Cave Texera from the H V A C has been involved in it. John Nociso from Night School has been involved in it. So we're bringing all the components together. It will not interfere with Night School, it will be a hands-on H V A C component. So they do a little bit of theory, then they go in the shop and they practice it. They have set a number of hours that they are trying to allocate, which is a hundred and fifty hours. Um, they are looking at the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday component of this. Uh, for you is a draft that Bristol Community College did of language. They are proposing, wanted to get this done. Been revised at least ten times, uh, of coming in because each week when they meet with us, we add, we diamond adds another component, as we say, we'll pay for that, we'll pay for that. They have, they're gonna entice students by buying them a laptop into the program. They have a retention, as you can see, the measures of success. They have it right, the student success, eighty percent completion, seventy percent jump, sixty percent retention. Each student is also going to receive a, uh, financial stipend at the end. If they complete the program, which they each get a thousand dollars. But they're looking to start off with a group of twelve and fifteen students. We have an educator here. One of our new ones, Amanda, is his name. But they're gonna switch off to two instructors in case somebody can't make it. Going to also hire two aides, one will always be working with the teacher, uh, C E M preferably, uh, who's gonna get paid because he or she knows the shop, can assist, uh, and knows the chairman and all the gym. They will be utilizing classroom space, right, in the shop.
I mean, this is good for three years until March twenty.
That's what they are proposing. So five, they, they, this is all they're proposing right here, um, as I've gone through it, they've gone through it already. We not see any negative things here. Uh, but also, they also know that shouldn't. This all fall apart, we'll shake hands and walk away friends. Uh, they're looking to actually utilize Diamond this year. This will start January twenty-sixth. But also start looking at what other programs can they have their adult, uh, education? They advertise, they vet the students. Um, they then send them over here to us, the students would have school here. They are responsible, our teachers are responsible for before it's the final conclusion, they're being paid for. B C C handles all the paperwork as part of their goal on this grant they are rich. They are looking in the future, if things work out, they're looking at plumbing as a possibility. Culinary arts is a possibility. Uh, because all you have a ton of everything. They're looking at automotive technology. They're looking at what they can't do, but there seems to be students who didn't go to a vocational school but want some kind of vocational training, where do they go?
Without the cost of pay.
Hmm.
The, the technical colleges, I agree.
But call it high cost, yeah. This, this is a very.
Yeah, I, I can tell you that I, I, um, kinda just threw in there that, you know, we can expand and offer early college high school or do enrollment free courses as kind of in trade or likeness and kind, there is opportunity and we know at the federal level, there is a ton of money getting pushed out to the community colleges.
Everybody do do enrollment.
We do, but.
That's not the. So they came to us because they can't do a vocational component.
Hmm.
And again, one of the people over there at B C C said, I know a place that can. And that's what started all this.
Our instructors will be.
Our instructors. It's our instructors, uh, our equipment, however, they will reimburse us or pay for any equipment that's needed for their students. They're gonna come in with like their own little tool bag, so they're not borrowing our tools because B C C's gonna buy them that also. Uh, there's a lot of enticements out there.
Materials?
Materials, they're gonna pay for that, they're gonna have their own storage, uh, shed inside, uh, storage closet, that big shed. They need a lot of stuff. Uh, they're just looking for the space to make this happen, so for that population that is not being served and wants to be served.
So I think it's an awesome idea, but I have a question, our attorney. Somebody is hurt.
I think they, I think they provide insurance. Their students, they have, they, I think you have it, you're packed.
But I, but I think just like on Night School, now, if they get hurt based on anything that's wrong in our building, it would be covered, that's all you do on Night School. Same thing, technically from the, from the parameters of how it's gonna be done, I don't see there's anything. Then in Night School.
Yes.
But honestly, we bring people in and out, our students, we charge them tuition, if something happens here beyond. This would be their students, but if, obviously, if there would be anything wrong with the building or what have you, uh, we would still be on the hook, but our insurance would cover it. And we could double check it out, insurance carrier, make sure there's no issues, but I don't see that as being an issue.
Any other questions?
It's on the show.
Who opened the school on Saturday?
We have a person, so John Nociso, who was the Night School instructor, the Night School director. Okay, for the time that he's here, like right after school, until Night School starts, B C C will pay him in order to make sure that doors are open, everything's in place, and he's supervising the instructor on Saturdays. He is coming in here to open it up, yeah, he's being paid by B C C to do this to him in. Um, he's gonna hear on the recommendation, to be honest with everybody here, I'm not looking to put on a, uh, a custodian on Saturday because it's going to be complying to one spot over there, there's no need. John will be here as supervisor of the building, to open the doors, let people in, lock up if need be afterwards.
So, is that the new contract?
These Night School instructors paid independently.
No, no, but. No, do we have to have a custodian?
I hear what you're saying, as a custodian.
I don't know, I'm, I'm just saying, I don't, off the top of my head.
We have, we have, uh, athletics that come in here all the time with their own passcode, you know, we reduce the gym. So.
Yeah, no, you're right.
We don't have, we don't have them be a bad, so they don't absolutely love everybody.
We have a Saturday program here for, uh, Mr. Salsina was working with. There were displaced and underemployed individuals on a grant. With displaced and underemployed individuals on a grant. He did that here. He was opening the building himself, couldn't be allowed on that. Coming in, he's just interested in having the kids here in the welding trade.
I, only reason I was saying about that is because I know that our policy. Calls for if we rent to an outside agency, they have to, they have to pay for.
But we can waive it.
Oh, no, we can waive it, but they normally pay for custodians and.
They can pay for customers.
I'm just saying, that's not normal policy.
Yeah.
But we can't waive it, no, we've done it for, we've done it, I'm just saying. Are they going to go by the policy, cause you said that we're charging the three hundred.
That's the rental policy for that, uh, and they're fine with that. Uh, my recommendation, attorney Brian and company members, would be to waive the fee of a custodian or to waive a custodian. Coming in because it's a one-person program, uh, two adults here that would open the building, secure the building and close it. Uh, so I would recommend that we waive till they move on to all the.
What, if this gets larger, depending upon what happens here in the Janice, yeah, this might, this could be everything to be a one dip wonder. Or it could, it could balloon, depending upon, they're, they're pushing it.
Brian, you, I don't know if this is happening anymore, but I, but it's John and Sisso, who's the director of an evening school. Doesn't he work on Saturdays because of our, our programs?
No, there are no Saturdays.
No more Saturdays.
A huge Saturday. There, there's no more, the evening school program is strictly after school.
Evening school, okay. You wouldn't necessarily be there, so they'll pay him.
No, they're going to pay him. They're going to pay him to be here on Saturday, along with the teacher, along with the aide.
Are they paying him a teacher salary?
No, they're paying him like the, uh, supervisor rate, which is, uh, they're doing a pretty decent rate. The teacher's rate is, is higher than the, because this is outside the contract, that they're paying it. They have recommended a sixty-five dollar an hour rate that they are willing to pay, because that's what they wrote.
Teachers?
Teachers. Which is higher than our night school rate, which I know, but they're, they're just anxious to get this.
Okay, but how are they? We're going to be responsible for that, how are we doing that?
I'm saying, we're going to be.
We're responsible for giving them teachers, how are we going to give them teachers? All of our teachers are working.
We have one.
In other words, if you only, if you only going to have one teacher out of four that are in H V A C, how do you select that person?
We actually have two candidates, one of them is a retired teacher, uh, from that program. H V A C still holds its license in, he said he would be willing to do it, and.
B C C is posting.
And that's what I'm trying to say, we're not hiring.
We're not posting.
Oh, that's what you're saying, okay. Cause I don't want to get into a union issue that, oh, how, how all of a sudden out of our teachers, did you come up with this person or that person?
They post, they post, which is going out shortly, they post.
So it has nothing to do with, that's all I want to hear.
They do the payroll. We don't do anything.
They get a separate paycheck.
They get a separate.
Did you already made, I'm not trying to disrespect, but you already made your names.
Yeah.
So how are they, like you just said, John Assis was willing to do it.
They showed, he showed an interest in it.
I know, but what about if someone you. Out supplies for that.
It was staffed, didn't it?
You're posting it just in-house.
No, they're posting on P C C.
So you could have.
No, that's what I'm chatting. It's not your job, it's them, they're going to hire them, you're not.
Yeah, but I think.
I agree.
Uh, but they would have to interview him or her, whoever it is.
No, I, I, I agree, I'm just trying to say. I'm trying to differentiate.
There's going to be a posting for a person, it's not going to say a diamond teacher, but they will. It's going to have to be qualified and licensed in the trade, only whatever license they have to hold. So I guess if somebody from New Bedford Vogue or Bristol Plymouth or Southeast didn't want to do it, apply for it.
Qualification.
Yeah, but that's what I'm talking, I'm trying to get into that, honestly, because technically it might not be John Assisso, so who should open a building?
Right, so the only thing I'd like to see.
You have to get one.
The only thing I'd like to see on this, because these are our shops, and I know that they're everybody's shop. But these are our shop teachers in that shop. So if I, I would like to see if one of our shops, if, if the teachers, if they're qualified for this program. They should get preference, that's what I would like to see in this counter. I don't think, would you, would you, would you like to just walk into your shop? Absolutely not, but I, I don't think you can put that in writing. Yeah.
Well, that's, well, that's the thing, you're going to have outside people who don't know the equipment.
Right.
Our specific equipment, trying to teach.
Don't care about our shop. They don't want it. They can't complain. This was put, this was put out there entirely, would it be in, because before we go any. Right, and you'd ask. I already. Put it out there, is if anybody in H V A C who would in fact be interested. What teacher said. So I expect that he will apply.
All I'm trying to say is this, if B C C's doing the hiring, the posting, the hiring.
Yes.
That I don't think that they can just say it's coming from one place, I don't know if they have the, the right to discriminate per se. Just the diamond people, I, you have to ask them that, because then that's going to depend on who we have to have here. So they're going to be our teachers, like, if there's supervisor, I understand, John Assisso may be interested. But if somebody else comes in and B C C not says.
That would be, so that would be something that their. Their administration would have to, so they don't get called on it, would have to figure that out.
Yeah, absolutely.
They want to hire our teachers, they have to figure it out.
But I think that is, I don't know if it can be done, you have to ask them, because they're doing the hiring. That preference is given to diamond people, the problem is, let's assume a diamond person doesn't apply. Then you can't have somebody open the building, you gotta have somebody else.
Well, we have, we have a, have a guy, not the teacher who is going to come, it's a.
No, no, they're, they're doing a hiring on.
They're doing a hiring. No, I thought, um.
That's why I'm asking the question, we're using aides.
Said who's going to come here.
The night school boy did. Put an interest in him, but not saying he's going to get the job.
The night school, the current night school director is interested in overseeing, that's what he said, I'm sure he's going to apply for it.
But we, we don't have any control over who's going to get the positions.
I think you got to work that out, so we, uh, so they got to work it out, because if we want.
Just, I'm not trying for the monkey, I'm trying to say we got to clear that up, because as, as Mr. Shuen just said, he wouldn't want anybody working on his machines.
Right.
So therefore, we, we should try to get diamond people in, we got to make that crystal clear to B C C.
Second first shot.
Yeah, I mean.
Because if they don't take you, you're still going to run this program with a retired teacher or whatever. You know what I mean, but they should have first shot at being able to teach that program.
I will work that out.
Yeah, yeah, B C C's got.
Just trying, you know what I mean?
Greg, never make the sign, that's on B C C.
I know, but that's what.
But I also know what Greg is saying, well, suppose that John Smith from New Bedford Vogue says, wow, diamond. B C C's advertising for a job to take place at Diamond. X amount of dollars per hour, I'm going to put you forward.
Let's assume B C C has a person, they want to be the supervisor.
Here's the good part, is it, thank you.
You don't have, they can't get.
They have, they have nobody because they have no vocation we trade people, they just. Right. But, but, but that's something for them, because that has nothing to do with us, if, if our hiring is done wrong, it's not going to come back to us. It's going to be, you don't consider diamonds anymore.
But you said they have a caller, down the road, they wanted to call very, now they have somebody that is.
No, that lady quick, she went over to Westport, she did.
I, 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 I'd like to see that, absolutely, no, absolutely, you know.
I can do that, two people I'm working with are very good, uh, and they know what. They know they're very. Get back.
Alright.
Good, thank you.
So we'll bring that back. Bring it back in December.
Yep, well, with that, um.
Will they want to stop? They want to stop in December. I mean, they want to stop. Okay. Call up Steve Canyon and open those in that position.
Alright, uh, next, um, use of facilities. So we wanted to skip that one right now.
We'll just carry on. On use of facilities, we had the one, that's, uh, yeah, that was there, but you don't get that cleared up, so we have the second one now. So the volleyball coach has submitted a use of facilities request, to use the gymnasium November twenty-fifth. From six to eight P M for the fifth annual volleyball alumni game and to waive all used up facilities. The recommendation is to approve that.
Your motion, sir. The second. All in favor?
Aye. Uh, surplus equipment, is Ben Mariano still on?
Not the curtain. She, she is.
I am still here.
Hi Jen, Jen, this is on that surplus equipment and the means of this physician traded, this is on the. I think you're familiar with that, yes?
I am a little familiar with it, yes. So what did, we have three lathes that, um. We are looking to trade in and upgrade them, the, um, the electronic components are new compared to all the other operational. Lathes in the shop, and this is the last of the three with the old technology on it. So, um, Mr. Shuen, I got a, uh, quote. When it came back after the tariffs were imposed, it had increased nearly, uh, seven, seven, eight thousand dollars for the tariffs. He went back and then seque, you know, requested trade-in values on these different, um, lathes. And the trade-in values of the three lathes came in at about thirty-five thousand dollars in total. Which superseded the cost of our tariffs to get these new three lathes sent in and, you know, decreased our cost about twenty thousand dollars. Um, so we're requesting that you, um, approve a trade-in process for these three lathes to get us the new ones. The new ones are being paid for through the Perkins Grant, two of them, and, um, Mrs. Patrasso has identified funding for the third.
That's what I was going to ask, because I haven't seen that couple of points. So, and there was. And we approved new lathes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Have the new lathes been approved?
Approved for funding?
The bid is opening on the seventeenth.
They just want to trade these in, which, um, products anyway.
Well, pretty soon you call with auctioned off old equipment, just that through the, through auctioning nationals. Uh, so we bought new equipment, the old equipment got put to the side, we auctioned it off and whatever it went out for. Um, and typically an average between three and five thousand dollars per machine, uh, so we're getting significantly more from this trading process. Um, because the value, well, they're not obsolete machines. Uh, but again, having the continuity of control being the same as all the other ones that we have in the shop, upgrade these three. Today management that trading. Well, they changed their mind.
Well, they changed their mind, yes. Yeah, alright. There, there is an explanation behind your honor sheet.
Yeah.
As to the process of.
Uh, the recommendation is to approve the surplus equipment, the meanings of this.
Trading.
Trade in. See, that's what I could, all in favor? Uh, monthly financial report.
In the absence of Mr. Patrasso having gone over, uh, with this, there's nothing significant to point out. Uh, unless the school can remember, uh, see something of significance. Again, we're in the beginning phases of this school year with about one-third, a little less of that year completed, so there's nothing in particular. Uh, to point out, or running a deficit or anything out of the. That's that one. We also have on the net, there's, uh, there's no recommendation on that, that is just.
Moving on to expenditures.
On the expenditures, uh, we do have some, there are expenditures in excess of ten thousand dollars. Uh, I'd like to point out on that page, it's right there. Um, we have Collies project, which we voted earlier tonight, Castle Booms, uh, and Suffolk, all three were voted, uh, earlier tonight. We also have a, a pretty good filing asking, you have, Autobus, the fellow one thousand. Trumbull's bus, uh, spread grant thirty-five thousand, I X L Learning, twenty thousand, Bristol Community College. For seventeen thousand, Bishop Bus for the soccer class trip, fourteen thousand. And A Walker and Sons, those are the storage people, they pick up and drop off, and that's for about a thousand six hundred and ten dollars.
I probably going to get much more again, but what about the ten million dollar one? You have to put that on there?
Oh, we, uh, we, we did that.
We did that in October.
And we reaffirmed it tonight. What are, what are the, um, what's Bristol Community College that keep up?
Do a little more with courses.
That's what we paid to have our students take courses over there at B C C.
Okay.
We articulated. And now, and our. So, good part is we have money for that.
On, on, on the last one. What's the eleven thousand six hundred book, because we pay a monthly fee to them.
That was to pick up the graphic arts equipment, uh, desk and the bookcases for storage. Uh, the books are other for storage, they, they charge us to, uh, pick it up, transport it there and hold it for us. I believe that that eleven thousand, uh, just Jennings is the entire, um. Month that we. In order to do everything, pick up, leave it there and start there.
So that's, and then we pay a monthly fee on top of that?
We do. Top of that, the monthly fee.
Yeah, so just so you know, we, we ordered all kinds of Perkins equipment, but graphics like seven or eight huge pieces. And we, they have, we intake shipment, I would make sure we got it, and then they picked it up.
With, with the cost, we. I'm, I'm going to say with the, the total cost of this, this should have gone out for a bit.
Yeah, uh, I can't speak to that, because I'm not.
I don't know if they're on, if you're like the state billers, but.
Most of them are on the state bills.
But still, uh, this, what's the monthly fee besides the same people?
I have that written down right now.
About a thousand something a month.
No, eleven thousand.
No, no.
I think this is all combined, no, what I can't do is.
With the monthly, uh, rent on that.
I, I can't speak to that because I don't know.
Cause I asked that question last, uh, two months ago, because I'm sure the expenses.
Well, it comes in the expenditures that we. Monthly expenditures that we sign, if, if, if you give me, if, if you would just afford this, and I can text her. Uh, what it is. Uh, I questioned it on two months ago, uh, wait, did you recall, I don't know.
I do recall me questioning, I don't recall with your.
My thought is like eleven thousand a month. It's a high number. All the equipment we have there, desks, whatever.
But, but my, my question is the total amount that we're going to be paying.
I, I can.
Yes.
We, we discussed this at last Friday's, uh, I think, uh.
That's them, as soon as we can get it in here, the better. The big problem is, they, they can't get it enough. Until, uh, they check the building and nothing flammable can be in there, you know, she has no cable, no books, no nothing.
At least we can get it as June first. It's a lot of money. Let me get the breakdown for you.
Get the breakdown and, and.
My guess is that.
I, I asked that because it went from like seven thousand to eleven and change, and I asked that question a few months ago, and the reasons. What, what stuff?
Took up more space. Which I mean rental for, for a storage for garage space right now, or open, open space, it's not cheap per square foot to rent either right now. You would look at a space metal building somewhere to try and rent it, if you're going to, a decent sized space of, you know, seven thousand square feet, you're going to be looking at. Close to ten thousand.
Right. Like we have, like literally this district office and stuff sold over there.
And the reason is, it is price, that's a price, right? Here's the answer, and I will. Sure, thank you.
Is that being paid out of N S T A funds?
No. It's us. There's still a kick that will not reverse that. Sorry. That's what I did know.
Oh, I did, right about that for.
What was the first time?
Well, the, the only thing I had said, and it's too late now, was we should have thought about this, and then going out to bed, I know we looked at. Several different spots, for the, for partnership was doing this, but, um, you know, we. We should have been part of that process, that's the only thing I'm saying.
But if you're looking at ten months, I mean.
A hundred, right?
Hundred thousand.
Yes.
We're paying in storage.
Way.
Yeah.
But where else would you put the equipment? And store somewhere, that's the problem. And that was a problem, we had the little here, yeah. Or somewhere. If there's any solace in this, then.
But, but this right here.
They bought the equipment, they chose that, at a reasonable price, rather than waiting till the last month to buy everything.
I think this is our regular monthly fee, that's what I want to find out, because if they're charging us eleven thousand.
Yeah, or is this just the storage, what our storage is for the monthly fee?
Storage fee, yeah.
Then that makes sense, they moved it, they stored it, and this is the fee that would. That's acceptable.
Is this the regular monthly fee, or what is, what is the, break down the eleven thousand six hundred and ten dollars?
What is it for the monthly?
Fee, right.
And how much do they pay since you?
But we just brought over there more equipment, so the fee is gonna go up.
They charge.
Should they?
Ten months, uh, a year, should they have a breakdown of what we paid for the year?
Yeah. Should. Alright, but as it stands now, we, we motion to, uh. Approve the expenditures. The second. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, and you'll have those tomorrow.
Alright, uh, discussion and approval of policy.
If the committee remembers that, at our last meeting, there was a policy for college that dealt with this. Children's staff, uh, and it needed to be, uh, amended just a tiny bit. The language in red, uh, is what does in fact, uh, what is taking place in there as of course.
Don't make that motion. To approve this.
As submitted. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Votes?
Thank you.
Okay. All's.
Alright, the emissions, we already. Quickly, because we've heard a lot tonight about as well as emissions that come on. So, uh. Enrollment report is still made anywhere at fourteen hundred seventy five. I'm sorry.
I know you want to get out, you had a little ways. Of D A first.
Yeah, that was important. Oh.
Sorry about that, Sid.
Um, we've had a lot of talk about the L P N program, um, over the last few months, obviously, as our lease is coming up to an end. The end of June, and we would have to go through the, the process again of trying to secure a lease. Uh, with that building or some other building, uh, we've been in talks with B C C. As most of you already know, uh, with this H V A program that's going on, um. They wanna try and reciprocate and get us some space at B C C to be able to provide our L P N program, uh. A functional area, we've met with them, uh, on a few occasions already, looked at numerous spaces that they have to offer. Uh, today, kind of settled on a space. That we think worked with minimal build out, uh, ample space to be able to provide, uh, what's needed to educate. The L P Ns, um, the program director was there, she agreed that this would, this space would work. Um, and, uh. At this point, I sat with Mr. Patrasso last week, we went over the financial. Status of the program, we looked at, you know, F Y twenty five with the lease currently in place. Versus F Y twenty six, F Y twenty seven, with the anticipated enrollment, in dist, in district, out of district. Uh, chapter seventy money, so on and so forth, expenses, we looked at everything, um, I feel pretty. Secure stating that this program is solid financially. Moving forward in a full time capacity. Um, and looking at the building that we're looking at at B C C. I think that, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we. Move relocate our L P N program from our current location to the B C C location. And start the process.
Yeah, I was just on the same.
Well, that's, no, no, the part of the motion should be.
Right.
A motion to pursue, uh, relocating the L P N program to Bristol Community College. Subject to negotiation of a successful, uh.
Like they submitted as a draft.
Correct, correct.
We need.
Okay, so a motion to pursue contract negotiations.
Motion, motion to pursue the relocation. College. Subject to successful contract negotiation regarding all these stuffs.
So I got the motions. Yeah, second. So we got a second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Votes? Okay, they're just bringing it back to the committee.
We're looking at almost what they've decided is what we're gonna pretty much charge them. For the space here at Diamond, it's pretty much what they're gonna charge us for the space over there. So we'll wash it out. Um, we would be responsible for the build out. Which, again, the space that we're looking at is, it's minimal. So it's not gonna be huge, uh, the I T is something we can work out. Between our eight, so that's our technology services department.
As far as utilities and that.
Yeah, can you put that in the?
Oh, yeah.
That's our approval.
But they've been very, as you can see, they've been very accommodating to find us a space that works for us, like we've looked at and followed the different spaces. Um, in fact. That's not the most recent. Um, in fact, today we met with them and they, they already sent us out a. Pretty much a drawing. Of what the space would look like.
Is this two classroom?
It's a classroom, it's one classroom space. And then it's a, another area across the hall, pretty much that's gonna be lab room, sim room, office. So on so forth. It's, it's a good sized space, we laid it out, we had them look at their, their current. Uh, nursing program and how their bed setups are set up with the, the dimensions that they utilize for their bed setups. Um, which our, uh, staff said that would work for them. As well as the size of their sim room, so we had a, had a drawn up and it kind of fit into the area that we needed to make it work. Uh, it's for them to be, it's for them to feel comfortable.
When, when you sit down and do the, you know. Contract. Three year contract.
That was the proposal, that's what it is, we'll, we'll go back.
Yeah, I want it, cause they, I wanna make sure it works.
We're going over there, that would, that would work for us and that would be a comfort, well.
Right.
Uh, we had never discussed that, cause first we wanted to find out was a suitable space.
Right.
Yep. And, uh, I think we found it today. And they're willing to change the school classes and accommodate us.
Okay.
In fact, the space that we're going into is, is utilized by, it's actually leased.
If they have a two year lease.
Two year lease, they're gonna re. That person to another class, at least. We're actually bumping somebody else, that's, they won't, they won't work with.
Okay. Alright. Um, no, just. Trim and all, you're bumping them out. Oh, yeah, yeah, the state please, that's fine.
I have friends over.
Oh, you're going with B T C, yes.
They're building B. Oh, you're going over there.
Oh, now you can come do L P N classes.
It is, it's actually, I will tell you, if it is that area, it is very good. Uh, there's park, it's basically they're all parking on the end down there, and they run around the corner, it's cafeteria.
Right.
Exactly. Library is next building, so it really is a good spot. They're not walking through the school, they're basically in their own area. It, it's actually a very good spot.
We looked at it as a, as a, a safe. Secure area with good parking, good lighting, students to be safe, they'll feel comfortable there, and it's on a college campus, it's gonna give them that feel. You know, that post secondary feel of, you know, going to college, going to L P N. And I think B C C's looking at it too, that it, it opens the doors for potentially some of these people. Need to go and try to go into the nursing program, things like that, I think it's, it's gonna work.
Oh, his nursing program is, oh.
And we have an articulation agreement with B C C. Uh, so the articulation agreement in the nursing program, health assisting, then it would be a natural flow.
Yes.
Give an idea what the campus is like.
Bring us, bring us back there with them.
I will. That could start.
Great, thank you. Alright, superintendent's report?
I will make this brief. First, as far as the enrollment, and everything is attached here for your information. One thousand four hundred seventy five students, it's staying strong. You do see the application report as of November fourth, where was that, six hundred thirteen, you heard. Now that that has risen over six hundred and fifty. Cooperative education. Cooperative education, we have, uh, currently. One hundred seventy three, according to this report, when it was published, we're really over one hundred and seventy seven. That is the grade of output. Uh, in the L P N, we're at thirty three students in the full time daytime class. Twenty one in district, eleven out of district, one of escape. Uh. Good numbers, as it's staying strong. Last moment, last of the L P N fifteen, the L P N advice board set for December fourth, that's all thirty. There'd be a flyer that I. Probably attached here for you. If you would like, then you can let me know, or you can follow the L P N program directly. You are welcome to attend us. And lunch room provided. And that is my report.
Any questions, comments? Uh, here we're done, moving on to the year calendar events. The month of November. On, I circled it November the twentieth. We're there because of November twenty eighth.
What did you say?
Open house. We have open house coming up on November twenty third, is that current? Okay, and you are welcome to that. Uh, open house is from, uh, one P M until three P M. If you would like to attend. Everybody comes in through the same door, which is door number forty one, that's the one that faces the student department. But it is that, if you'd like to come in, please come in.
Okay.
What's that? You will not be counted, though, there will not count as a single ball for any of you to come in. But you know what it is, it's a good chance to see what's going on at one of the last times. You'll get to come into the building for an open house.
I like that, Rob, was. Help me. With some kind of, uh. Uh, screen to show it is. Is, uh. Last, uh.
Flying over.
And you want to fly. You want to be.
Fly in.
Want, want to be in the gymnasium for that?
Yeah, no, I'm gonna be in the gym, uh, it only needs a small. On a screen.
I have to put a computer up there to show that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so you want to go fly over this.
When I did the auto program years ago, it, it, it only brought in about, uh, ten percent of the people. So when I was in the camp, uh, the, when I've been in the gym, he is after, I'll come over and ask questions.
And maybe actually you're asking for that, for the flyer and the videos to be prompted up on that. Probably on a computer screen, do you need any other written material?
Um, just if we can get the, uh. The flyer that we have, but there's also, you know, the postal boards that we guys still have there. Some of those. Just so you're aware, the eleven. Several. Staff, uh, next, sorry, it's our next one. Eleven days.
So, in the month, that's all in November, in the month of December. Mind, we have the tours, the one thousand person tour coming through. You're welcome to attend and see it in action if you're in the neighborhood. What, the tours? One thousand people in two hours.
Send me the video.
You died?